This call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Here.
Commissioner Hovey?
Here.
Commissioner Laney?
Present.
Vice Chair Lee?
Here.
Chair Oblea?
Here. I just want to remind anybody that if you wish to speak on a item that is not on tonight's agenda, you'll have a chance to fill out a blue card, give it to our clerk, and you'll be called up at the appropriate time. If you want to speak on something on tonight's agenda, also fill out a blue card, give it to the clerk, and we'll call you when that item comes up before the commission. Pledge of Allegiance, please stand. Join me in the pledge of allegiance. Please the flag. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Okay. Item number three. Commission reorganization. Clerk?
The planning commission appoints a member to serve as the chair and vice chair annually. The appointments become effective immediately after the motions. The newly appointed chair and vice chair will preside until the last planning commission meeting in calendar year 2020, when a new chair and vice chair will be selected. At this time, we will entertain motions for planning commission members to appoint a chair to preside until calendar year 2020.
I would like to nominate Josh as chair for 2020.
Do we need a second?
Yes, we do.
I'll second that. Josh, do you accept?
I'll accept.
Be nice to him.
Don't be so enthused.
Yeah. So how do we want to do this? Just a roll call vote?
Yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
See how easy that is?
Aye.
Just change the name tag and it's done.
At this time, we can entertain motions for the commission to appoint a vice chair.
I'll entertain a motion to appoint our vice chair for the next year.
I nominate Mrs. Hovey.
I second.
I second.
You accept?
I accept.
Want to say something?
Well, somebody else could nominate somebody else.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Lee?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Congratulations.
Yes, you do.
Chair?
Yep.
All right, next month. Oh, we still don't know. All right. So thank you for the nomination and the vote of confidence in chairing next year. I'm happy to say that Vice Chair Hovey is joining. Thank you. So is it next item? You guys got to bear with me on this. I'm new.
Item number, let's see. Public comment. Yep.
Yeah.
Item four.
Public comment, okay. So at this time, I would like to entertain a public comments period. If anybody wants to address the planning commission that's not on the agenda item, you can do so right now. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, we have received two requests. The first from Keith White.
Okay.
I just want to wish you guys Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. And just so you guys know, Riverside Transit Agency on December 31st at 2:30 PM will be giving free rides on all their buses, on fifth round buses. Not just not except with the outright dollars you got to pay. And also starting December 21st through January 12th, Riverside Transit Agency is doing a quarter fair for high school kids, I mean from kindergarten through high school, 12th grade. So that's starting December 21st. So guys, if you want to drive them, they can ride bus for 25 cents. They have to show picture ID. So but have happy holidays and please be safe. And drink and drive, take the bus or Uber, the plane. See the dollars to take home, save your car. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second speaker is Michael O'Connor.
Good evening and congratulations on new appointments. It's always an exciting time of year to see things. I'm here to compliment you as a commission for your work last meeting, where you really had a lot of discussion and a lot of thought about the Chevron and Hamner Place project. And it was one of the most, I'd say, dramatic moments I think I've seen in a meeting where we won, 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 and then tough decision had to be made. I wanted to give a little bit of feedback from what I've thought about since that meeting. I've actually taken a look at public records for the first six houses on the south side of Mississippi, starting from Hamner heading east. Each of those homes is owner-occupied homes. The very first one in the corner has been owned since the time the builder built that property. The same with the one six properties over. The other three were people that have come in at least three years ago and a little bit further back. I actually want to make sure that those people especially understand, you know, what this project is that's looking, you know, going to come back somewhere, whether it comes back to this committee or city council, we'll see. But I do think that there needs to be a proper reach out to those particular property owners. I also wanted to comment a little further on one of the comments that Ms. Hovey had said that she was concerned about just the whole concept of having a gas station that close to residential. And in thinking about it, we do not have any other gas stations in our city that are located that close to residential. We do have some relatively close, 300, 400 feet, but not really less than 100 feet. And so I think that was a really good call overall to kind of push back on it. But if it does come back, I just thought you should think about those things as well, that we do have owner-occupied properties. Those properties were built well before that land changed use at all. It had been, you know, a landscaping company. I didn't know there was a comment about, well, you know, at least there's not homeless people or wandering people through. And if there was that kind of problem, that's only been for the past couple of years, in my opinion. Those people expected a nursery behind them for quite some time. So that's what my comment is. Thank you for doing a good job. Have a good eve, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas. Thank you. Any other public comments?
No, we do not have any more.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the next item, which is the additions and revisions to the agendas. Does staff have any additions or revisions?
I do not have any additions or revisions to this section at this time on the consent calendar. I do want to let you know that the planning commission update has been modified to reflect changes to the Chevron project. So we'll just go ahead and make mention of that now.
Thank you. Does commissioners have any additions? Nope. Here he's none. Do we have to vote on this or do we just move on? Okay. Consent calendar. Expecting everybody to have read the minutes. So anything, any questions or comments on the consent calendar?
Will staff, Mr. Chairman, staff commented on that right now? Do we have a revision or an update on the consent calendar?
The one revision to the consent calendar is with the planning department update, specifically to the Chevron project, it's been modified to reflect the current status of the project.
Okay. So that's this packet, right?
That is correct.
Okay. That is that packet. In a nutshell, Mr. Chairman, in a nutshell, what is the new status of this Chevron gas station?
On the planning department update, we reflected the status as it was in progress because the applicant was revising the plans to reflect some of the comments that the planning commission stated in terms of the glazing. It's not real glazing, but fake glazing, et cetera. You know, things that you brought up at the last meeting. And there was also public outreach going on. So the comment was that it was in progress, but we've modified it to reflect that it was denied and that the appeal has been filed and the applicant is making modifications to the plans.
Yeah.
So it'll be before the council in January.
Okay, thank you for that. The staff or any members of the public want to pull any of the consent items?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have received a request from Michael O'Connor to pull item 6.1.
Okay, we'll pull item 6.1.
And if I may, I just want to rescind that. I got confused between this meeting and another one, so.
Thank you. Other than that, we do not have any other requests.
Sounds good. Does any of the commissioners want to pull any items? Okay. I'll solicit a motion.
Motion to approve?
With amended?
With amended planning department changes.
I'll second. Roll call.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Oblea?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hovey?
Aye.
Chair Lee?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Presentations, do we have any presentations from staff today?
We do not have any presentations this evening.
All right, then we'll move right into the public hearing. So item 8.1. Conditional use permit to sell alcoholic?
I need to abstain because it's too close to my house. So I'm within the boundary and did receive a letter.
All right, sounds good. All right, conditional use permit for Jonos Simple Japanese Food.
Right.
Report, please.
Yes, it will be presented this evening by our planner, Alan Lim.
Alan.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, commissioners. So Jonos Simple Japanese Food has applied for a type 41 alcohol license to sell beer and wine for onsite consumption. The project location is located at the northwest corner of Hamner Avenue and Riverboat Drive. In that same retail center, at the southern portion is a 7-Eleven, and there are offsite sales at that 7-Eleven currently. This is a street view of Jonos, which abuts Luke's Nails and Spa and a dentistry office as well. In terms of the operation, beer and wine sales will occur until 9:00 PM from Monday to Saturday and until 8:30 PM on Sunday. As you can see, the floor plan, in the floor plan are the proposed storage for the alcohol, which will only exist within the kitchen. In the center is going to be, is going to be a refrigerator marked as Exhibit A. And Exhibit B is going to be an existing metal shelf, which is currently placed at that location. Exhibit A shows the proposed refrigerator, and Exhibit B is the existing metal shelf. Here are the current existing onsite sales of alcohol within Eastville. Jonos Simple Japanese Food is marked by a star. On the left is a census map, which includes Eastville and is divided by, which is divided into several tracks. Jonos is located in track 406.15. On the top right is a list of onsite sale of alcohols and their prospective census tracks. Located in the red box, I have outlined the tracks of the alcohol sales, the onsite alcohol sales, which are on the same track. It includes five restaurants in Eastville, and the other five are included in Carupa Valley within the Verona Marketplace at the northeast corner of 406.15. As you can see in the diagram on the bottom is onsite census data indicated for that track, there are a max allowed of eight, eight onsite sales of alcohol, and there currently are 10 active, which in turn calls for overconcentration. So alcohol beverage control has provided the max number of liquor licenses for each census track based on the density for each track and before it would be considered overconcentrated. And in the event of overconcentration, ABC would require a public needs and necessities letter in order to be sent to them to show that they are a unique restaurant or facility. Jonos has demonstrated the policies and procedures which enhances customers' and employees' safety. And comparable to the restaurants in the track, it is a unique dining experience to Eastville. Also, it is important to note that it is almost one mile away from any other alcohol sales within that same track. So a summary of the COAs. The sheriff's department has done their review, and they have determined, they have provided typical conditions, such as the sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption will cease one hour prior to close of business, installation of surveillance monitoring systems, employee training, and alcohol will be consumed within the restaurant. There are several findings for their approval. Jonos is consistent with the general plan and the zoning code, and the use will not be detrimental to the neighborhood. Also, it is consistent with ALUC as it is located outside of ALUC's boundaries. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit subject to conditions of approval. And planning commission's options are: one, approve the project with additional changes or conditions; two, continue the public hearing and direct the applicant to make revisions; or three, deny the CUP. Staff is prepared to answer any questions from the commission. Also, the applicant is here tonight to answer any questions or concerns as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions to staff? Nope, no questions? All right. This is kind of related question to the item, but I know we're doing a census of next year. And I know that there were some requests from census on changing some of the tracks. Have we submitted anything in terms of boundary changes to the census?
Under the previous planning team, it's my understanding that, maybe it's the braces, right? It's my understanding that there were changes submitted, but it would be good to find out when the census makes those determinations, what those tracks are actually going to be. Because as you can see, we're bifurcated. Some of our spaces shared by another community. We have no control over what happens in that adjacent community, so it's a good point.
Okay, exactly. So yeah, I just wanted to kind of, wanted to find out if we've submitted anything and if there are any changes, you know, that's going to definitely change some of the outlook of our ABC licenses permit. So anyways, that was just a kind of related question, but off the topic. At this point, then I'll open up the public hearing. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, we do not.
Okay. Then technically, do I have to close the hearing? Okay, I'll close the hearing. If... Do we ask for applicant to speak? Or do we pass already?
If the applicant wants to speak, they can speak. We'd have to reopen the public hearing. That doesn't look like a card was presented or if the commission would like to ask questions of the applicant. They're certainly able to do that, but you could also proceed on to discussion and entertain a motion.
So if that's the case, we'll just entertain the discussion at this point from the commission. Any discussions, any thoughts? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Moving.
I second.
All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Oblea?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hovey?
Aye.
Chair Lee?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Can we get Commissioner Charleston back?
We'll wait for him. All right, sounds good. Let's go into item 8.2. Major development plan reviewed to construct a multi-tenant building with a restaurant at Hamner Place. Staff report, please.
Chair and commissioners, tonight for your consideration is a major development plan review. It is for pad nine in the Hamner Place, and we'll walk you through the presentation. So you're quite familiar with the location on the east side of Hamner Avenue, both sides of the terminus of Schleishman Road. The star indicates where the proposed pad nine will be. It's on parcel number eight, and the parcel size is approximately 1.22 acres. There is the site plan. It just is the color rendering that the applicant is using to ford marketing to different tenants, but it just gives you a good idea of the amount of landscaping and just the layout of the site. So I chose to use that one instead of just the regular site plan drawing. And as you know, Hamner Place won't just be a strip commercial center. It does have entry monumentation, enhanced landscaping in the Schleishman Road, also a dining experience because several of the restaurants have outdoor seating arrangements, and we'll walk you through that as well. So just wanted to give you an idea of that entry marker, which is definitely a statement piece. So on to pad nine. Pad nine actually has two components to it. We'll walk you through that now. This is the building footprint that was included in the agenda packet. There's an 8,190 square foot space that's allocated for Tony's Chop House. And then there's also a 1,700 square foot patio, and then that being the space for Tony's Chop House. And there you go for the patio that's adjacent. So you can get a good idea of what will be happening on a portion of pad nine and just a portion of what the renderings are going to look like. You see definitive entry there. And then there's column treatment and eyebrow treatment, and then differences in colors and height and depth of the building, and then glazing, very walkable as well. Also see some street furniture as a part of the site plan. So Tony's Chop House is an elevated steakhouse concept. It definitely has a traditional steakhouse menu. They have a dry age program for their meat. They wanted to highlight that. Private dining room inside. There is a Wine Spectator worthy wine list that they have in their meat cellar property. There's the patio, which we indicated in the other slide, where you saw it was a 1,700 square foot patio, which is a good size. A very sophisticated, modern, but classic design. Quality USDA prime cuts of meat and a very focus on hospitality. So the second portion of pad nine are the tenant spaces. And so there they are. That box is indicative of both of them. And so there's no tenants that have been allocated for those. That's nine, they're speculative, and they'll be marketed at another date once the building is constructed. And so just other elevations and renderings of the site, of the building itself. So in the agenda report, we lately, this year, we began to do a table where we put the standards on one side and specifications across the top and compare how the project is doing. So as you can see, if you go down the list, everything is a meeting code. There's just a landscape plan. That's the reason why the one says required is a condition of approval, only because we just need the actual landscape plan. So we just wanted to call out that we didn't have that, all of that information. We have some of it, but not all of it. So the Hamner Place, the other tenant spaces have all met the landscape requirement, and this one will too. We've added it as a condition. And then also the pedestrian walkways and the lighting are typically shown on the landscaping plan, so that's why that one's indicated as well. Otherwise, we are very proud to say that this plan does meet all of the requirements, except as noted therein, and that's on a separate plan that's generally done at plan check. Also, in terms of parking, we have five and a half parking spaces that are required for every thousand square feet, and this one will meet that parking space. I know in terms of parking spaces, it says 46 spaces for general retail and loading, but the one loading space is actually inclusive. As long as it is a loading space, it doesn't necessarily have to be an additional one. So this property is in compliance with it. As a matter of fact, they're actually over the number that's required. There are 57 spaces that are provided and 46 that are required. So I want to bring that to your attention as well. Now, in terms of outreach, the applicant did canvas a neighborhood adjacent to the project site and introduced the project to those who were available to meet. Did some door knocking, and left business cards and copies of the site plans for those who were unavailable. There were six letters that were obtained in support. Now, the letters, the copies of those are up at the dais, and so the letters do both state Lewis Retail Center, and since they were door knocking, it also relates to another project that's not on the agenda, but all of the letters do reference the Lewis Retail Center in its totality. You have those up at the dais, and there's the area showing the residences that are just immediately adjacent with the blue star indicating where Tony's Chop House would be. Now I will turn the presentation over to Ms. Kimberly Wright, our economic development manager. She will talk about the economic development for this project.
Good evening, Commissioner Lee, Vice Chair Hovey, congratulations, and other commissioners and members of the public. So I'm going to go over some quick highlights here regarding pad nine. So as you likely know, Eastville has been working very diligently and motivated to find our first dining restaurant. Tony's Chop House, which is intended to be a part of this pad, would be our very first fine dining restaurant in Eastville. And as Gina shared, it would be about just under 6,000 square feet with an outdoor patio of 1,700 square feet. And also, as she shared, there will be additional retail space with 2,270 square feet and a patio space of 705 square foot. So for potential one-time revenue for pad nine at Hamner Place, estimated development impact fees for the city would be $16,109 and change, and business registration would be 117. For potential, excuse me, for potential annual revenue, estimated annual sales tax revenue would be $58,100, and estimated property tax towards the general fund would be $515, and estimated fire fund revenue would be $1,334. Back to Gina.
So the project does, as we talked about earlier, meet the requirements that are specified in the commercial zoning designation. And it is the...
in the commercial zoning designation, and it is the recommendation of staff that the planning commission approved this major development plan review for the eight thousand one hundred and, one hundred and ninety square foot building, and it, the tenant spaces, we've said before, would consist of the restaurant space and the tenant buildings, subject to the conditions of approval that are contained in the agenda report, so I would be very happy to answer any questions that the commission may have at this time.
Sounds good, thank you. This is my little pick, questions to staff from the commission? Any questions?
I do have some, I'd rather hear from the applicant before.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll open up the public hearing, and we'll hear from the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Rick Manners with Lewis Retail Centers, happy to be here tonight, we're very excited to be bringing Tony's Chop House to the city, in concert with the city, being able to find that type of restaurant was a major coup, and so we're moving along on the, on the lease with them, so very excited about that, it should be a really nice addition to the city, to the center. The building itself, it should blend in very well with the other two shop buildings that were previously approved, this one, design-wise in my opinion, is even a little higher scale than those two were, incorporates a lot of the elements that other buildings have on the site, so it should be a very, very dynamic and very exciting building. Other than that, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Alright, do we have any, any questions from the commission? Or, okay.
So, I think everyone is pretty enthused about this coming, but my question is, is it, on a sixty-foot high or square foot building like that, we got fifty-five, fifty-six parking spaces, how many people can that building hold? How many patrons can he have in the restaurant at, at one time? And then doing that math, does fifty-seven spots look like enough? Because you go to any of the nice steakhouses in the Inlet Empire, up to Victoria Gardens, sometimes you are parking way away to find a parking place at those restaurants, they're just, they're full to the extent to where on the weekends, you still have a hard time finding parking, so when we say we're six or seven parking places above what's necessary, I'm not sure if that's a good way to look at it, just because code says you have to have five spots per thousand feet, so I would really be interested in how many, what's the capacity, capacity of the restaurant when the fire department says, no more people? Do we know how many he's gonna sit?
Top of my head, I don't, usually that, that factor is like one, one person per fifteen square feet for that type of use, but the flip side of that, within that parcel itself are the fifty-seven stalls we're talking about, but this building in conjunction with the other two, has some overflow that goes in front of the Chevron, and then across the street with the other buildings that are proposed on that side of Schleishman, with the connectivity that's being built into the center, really, you have to look at the overall shared parking dynamic, because if you look at that entire bubble between just the three shop buildings, there is somewhere in the proximity of two hundred and twenty stalls total, just in that zone, so then you also have additional down by Chevron, additional across the street, so I understand your point, but I think when you look at the overall shared analysis, we feel comfortable with it, Tony feels comfortable with it, and we also are proposing with the city's cooperation, which may end up being a temporary situation, but on the east side of this building, there potentially would be an easement for some additional parking, which we are viewing as more of lift and valet and that sort of parking, so that would be on the east or the backside of this building, call it phase one, until the city comes into the city hall development, and at that point, that zone of parking will fold into whatever the city comes up with for the city hall overall parking, so, especially once that is developed, and you have that parking lot, and you look at the shared parking, city hall typically closing at six o'clock, Tony's getting really active more towards seven, eight PM, you know, there's, there's all that dynamic that will kick in, so I don't have a direct number for you, per occupancy, but overall shared parking, we, we think we're okay.
That makes me feel better, I, because I looked at that, and I thought, well, the other tenants are still gonna be open similar times, they're not gonna close at five, they're gonna be open till six, seven, eight, maybe longer, and I didn't want that overflow to hurt us, but I forgot about the, the city hall, so when that does come into play, that would alleviate any other business overflow too, so.
Yeah, it will help.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
My only real concern is the proposed trash enclosure, backing up to the existing residents on Mississippi, I'm wondering if that can be moved away from the back wall of the existing residents there, maybe to be put on the other side of Tony's Chop House, so that the ill effects of the trash enclosure do not impose on our existing residents, and maybe help them out there.
I had a feeling that would come up, and yes, we can.
Yeah, just somewhere else.
Although there is, just for information, those residents have a six-foot-high block wall, screen wall, at the back of their lots.
Yeah.
And from that wall down to our site, there's about a six or seven foot slope, and then there's additional slope toward the building, but yeah, not a problem to move that south of the drive aisle.
I just noticed that that house directly behind that trash enclosure is very close to their own back wall, and my dad backs up to Albertson's, and the trash enclosures aren't even close to his back wall, and he has the effects of the trash cans there, so even if they're moved, you know, there still might be some effects, but being that close, I see issues there.
And just for what this is worth, that twenty-five foot landscape strip on that north side of that parking, abutting those residents, that'll be fully landscaped, and we've had conversations with the, the residents, when we came through for the original approvals on the original two shops, our idea of planting trees as a buffer in that area was to work with those homeowners such that, I'm sure they enjoy views today, and so when we plant trees, we intend to coordinate with them, if they have a window, see your picture in the back of their house, and where the emblem is, is their window, we would tend to plant trees to either side of that versus directly in front of it, and we've had those discussions with the homeowners, and they seem receptive to that, not that that will really help with the trash enclosure per se, but that whole twenty-five foot strip will be heavily landscaped and treed, and all the residents we spoke to are happy about that idea.
Commissioner Obelia?
Yes, I have a few concerns, and I don't know how familiar you are with the day-to-day operations of this restaurant, since you're representing Lewis Properties, right?
Yes.
The outside patio is, that is not going to be a covered patio, is it?
It is covered.
It is covered?
Yes, it is.
Because it doesn't show it on this architectural rendering as covered?
Well, there are, there are shade structures that are being proposed within it, so it won't be a solid covering over the entire patio, but there are shade structures that will be within it.
Like umbrella-type things or something?
No, there's a, there's a fabricated, there's a company, it's called, they, they have a structure called VISO, V-I-S-O, so it's basically a metal frame that has a cantilever roof, if you will, that has slats typically on the top, so we're proposing those types of units within the patio, so some of the seating will be covered by those, some will be more open, and then we're proposing festoon lighting over all of that.
Okay, my concern is, not necessarily that it's a covered patio or not, which covered patio would be ideal because of the weather, but now, this is outdoors, is this going to be, is this area going to be part of the inside restaurant also, or is this gonna be bussed by busboys, pick up their plates, or?
Yes.
Are they gonna go outside in a patio with to-go boxes or something?
No, this is a full-service restaurant, so that'll be waitstaff on the patio as well.
So there won't be only emergency exits out of the patio, or is, will they be able to leave from the patio directly?
There will be gates on both ends, east, east and west, so a person could leave by those, you know, have crash hardware.
Uh-huh, so they, they'll re, use the regular plates and utensils when they eat outside, not disposable items?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay, because if they're gonna use disposable items, then we need to have, make sure they have some kind of trash cans out there to handle that, but if it's gonna be bussed, and it's gonna be part of like the inside, where you're gonna either dine in or out, they're gonna wait on you, and?
Yeah, their whole concept here is, is...
Is supposed to be fine dining, so?
Fine dining, I mean, they're not, they're not QSR, quick serve, I mean, this is sit-down fine dining, so yeah, it should be silverware, china.
With the renderings that we received, it wasn't very clear how that patio was going to be utilized, so that's what my concern was, so staff is saying that it is in a covered...
Right, there, this is, these are the renderings that we have, when it comes to the building division, they would give the full building, mechanical, HVAC, electrical, and all of that, so these are the architectural renderings that we have, but we've talked not only with the Lewis Retail, but also the owners of the restaurant are here, and the audience this evening as well, so, and I know that members of the staff have had an opportunity to dine at their other location, and the manner of the operation is definitely upscale eating environment plated with silverware, and it's a, it's a social atmosphere, and a very upbeat, upscale, and very good food, so the patio is incorporated, you don't have to, you know, enter it from the outside, it's, you enter it from after coming inside the restaurant, and then out to the patio, so it's an option for dining, should you wanna dine outside and enjoy the weather, or you can dine on the inside.
Okay, so it'd be bussed, everything's bussed in there, they have a busboy that's gonna pick up plates and trash and all that kind of stuff, but my concern is just trash being left out, and if we ignore that, we've had tenants that come in and we didn't pay attention to that, and next thing you know, there's trash all over the place, and with winds that we have in this area, that trash doesn't stay there long, so that was my concern.
Yes, it is.
If it's gonna be bussed, and no trash is gonna be generated, then I'm happy with it, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I just have a one quick question, so overall, there's about eight EV parking, right, throughout the site?
For this building, yeah.
Oh, just for this building?
Yes.
Eight?
Just for that site.
Okay, okay, I thought it was for the entire thing, okay, so overall, how many EV parking do we have?
Well...
There's some.
Okay, they're, they're right, the hotel has, and, and if this one is approved, that would make eight, but overall, in the center, I don't have that count for you, but I can get it for you, and not less risky, you recall offhand, because I don't, I wanna say with this one, it would be in the neighborhood of twelve, ten, but I will have to confirm that.
The, the reason I mention that is, is because, you know, EV owners, at least currently, because I'm, I am one, tend to look for those parking spaces, and they don't mind walking over longer distances after parking those EV vehicles, right, so we need to make sure that the pedestrian elements, as you mentioned, and the condition has to be solid, and I trust that the staff will definitely look at those, right?
Yes, Commissioner, Chair. Not longer Commissioner.
Thank you, so do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, we do. Our first speaker is Ike Boetsma.
Mr. Boetsma.
Good evening, Chairperson Lee and planning commissioners, I'd just like to show my support for this project, I think this has been requested by the residents of Eastvale, a fine dining restaurant, and I think we should move forward on it, I, it, it's in the top what the request that people have been making, and I'd like to move forward on it, thank you.
Our next speaker is Oscar Alvarez.
Good evening. I, hopefully this, this is an opportunity where I can speak on behalf of this, I live right behind parcel eight, and so I received a letter, so I figured this is the time, I've been looking at the construction being done, and it's like, literally, I can see the big machines pretty much where you guys are at, that's how close it is, the one thing that I noticed is I'm seeing cracks on my wall in the back, I'm not gonna say it's that, that's the reason, it's made me more visual of what's going on with my wall, and I've seen additional cracks, so, I don't know, within the span of thirty feet, I have a long back wall, I've seen a few cracks, one thing I can say is that there, it, my property actually shakes while all the, all the heavy machinery is coming by, so that is a concern for me, and I'm hoping it's something that you guys can look into, and that, I mean, if the wall starts deteriorating, I can't afford working on that whole thing, so I'm hoping that, you know, part of this construction, that it's something that can be looked at and maybe addressed. I am excited about seeing the construction in the back and the potential of it, but one thing that is opposite of the folks that live off of Mississippi is that they're up high, whereas I'm down low, and right now, the separation between my back wall and the construction, I would say is about, I don't know, eight, no, about fifteen feet, and then the grating gets really high, to the point right now that when I'm on my second, second floor of my house, I can't see anymore, so it, the slope is that high, now, I don't know if it's because they're pushing the dirt back, and then eventually it's gonna settle back down, but I'm just really curious to see how that's gonna develop, and I don't know if there's any information that can get sent to the, the residents back there, there's three of us that are impacted, unfortunately, one of them works at two in the morning, he couldn't make it, and he has cracks in his wall as well, and then the other resident is, is in Las Vegas, so I'm kind of representing them, and then just, just as far as tree lines and everything that you guys are planning to put back there, I just don't, I can't get the visual, I guess, of how it's gonna appear, and, and I guess I'm, I'm anxious about it, so those are just the topics I wanted to bring up today, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chair and members of the commission, if I may, I would like to take that opportunity to meet with the resident, and go over all the site plans, the line of sight, the cross-sections, et cetera, answer any questions that he may have, and then we can report back to you.
That would be great, yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna ask, okay, thank you. Any other speaker cards?
No, we do not, but for the record, we have received six letters, comment letters in support of the project.
Okay.
And then Chair and members of the planning commission, I know that, I don't believe they sent out a card, because I noticed they may not have had the opportunity, but I would let you know that the owners of the meat cellar, assuming to be Tony's Chop House in the city if, if it meets a favorable recommendation this evening, are in the audience, and so if they would like to have an opportunity to share their enthusiasm and excitement, this would be that time.
Hi there, I am Sarah Vigas, this is my husband.
Aye, thank you.
Anthony. First of all, sorry we're late, we are still getting used to the traffic patterns over here in Eastvale, and we're not good at them, so sorry, no, we are thrilled for the opportunity, the energy that you guys have over here, you are so young and hopeful, and, you know, on the cutting edge of, of so many things, in the way that you're building your cities so mindfully, you know, it's really exciting that we have the opportunity to perhaps introduce a new concept over here, in Claremont and in Chino, if you're familiar with us, we have, they're called steakhouses, but they're more of like a California-style steakhouse, they're a little less upscale, a little more casual, you can wear your shorts and, you know, be comfortable, but Eastvale is giving us the opportunity to bring a white tablecloth, fine dining steakhouse experience, and so we're super excited for the Lewis Group's opportunity.
And for sure, all the way to the patio, everything's gonna be one hundred percent fine dining, all the way, I promise, excuse my voice a little, little, a little sick this evening, but also, yes, wanted to thank you for the opportunity, but we are definitely, along with the Lewis Brothers... But um we are definitely, along with the Lewis Brothers, definitely open to any suggestions, any modifications that we need to do. Um that suggested by the residents, by the, by the city council, uh we are exceptionally open. It's a team effort. We wanna make sure we're part of the community and wanna grow with the community, not just come in here and impose on the community, so.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
We're due.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You answered my questions, that's a.
All right, so um at this time, we'll open up for discussion. I'll, I'll close the public hearing first. Discussions, comments from commissioners. Okay, all right. So, no, I, I, we, we are, I think, um in, in, in kind of the same boat with the council. Uh we're very excited to have um some upscale dining out here in Eastville. Um this is our first one. Um I think everyone, um including the residents, are pretty excited about um the new, new restaurant that's coming down. Um I think there was a lot of buzz around that Tony's Chop House already, um so I think everyone is, everyone is kind of anticipating this to happen. Um I think um it's one of those things that it's, as uh Mayor Bootsma kinda mentioned, um that it's something that our community wanted. And this is exactly um the, 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 the type of restaurants that we wanted, and, and hopefully will support. Uh the business so that more um similar restaurants and uh development comes to town. So I'm very excited about it. Um with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Do we need to put the amendment in as far as?
Yeah, yes, yeah, go ahead and add a.
With, with adding, uh moving the trash.
Adding a, adding a, a condition to relocate the trash enclosure subject to approval by the planning director.
Away from the residence.
Away from the residence. So is my motion clear?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Oblea?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hovey?
Aye.
Chair Lee?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Congratulations.
Ryan?
I just wanted to come up and clarify a little bit. Right now, they're stockpiling uh extra soil out there because. Uh the, the property needed to be professionally compacted, as well as there were some fill sites out there. Because the landscape company that was there before used to dig a hole twenty feet deep and, and throw stuff in there. So they, there's a lot of organic material down pretty deep on that property, so they had to excavate all that stuff. And so as you're seeing piles go up twenty, forty feet out there, um what they're doing is, is they're using that soil weight to compact the soil. But also dig out some of the soil that's in there, and then it will be leveled and, and uh and graded. And that's pretty typical with any grading project, where they go out and do soil testings. And if the land needs to be compacted or is too moist or whatever, they'll put twenty to forty pound uh feet of soil on there to add some weight to. To press out that moisture, a- and it's part of just the geo- geotechnical operations of the grading. Um and, and then the property will be leveled out, so if you're looking out your backyard right now and you see these, whoa, these are huge out there. Uh um that, that's just, they're just stockpiling the soil out there, a- and cleaning out uh the old fill and bringing in new fill and, and balancing out the site.
Okay, thank you. So ho- hopefully staff will uh contact the resident and, and address some of those issues.
Yep, he, he has our, he has my personal cell.
Oh, oh, great. All right. Then we'll move on to the next item. Tenanted parcel map, uh Limonite and Archibald Avenue, uh vacation of right-of-way. Staff report, please.
Chair and members of the planning commission, this is an amendment to a tentative parcel map. Uh it's, it's for a site located at the northeast corner of Limonite and Archibald Avenue, um AKA The Merge. Uh this par- parcel map actually has already been approved by the commission, so let me just key in on the, on the. On the things we need to talk about this evening. So you're aware of the uh project location, they're on Limonite uh Avenue and Archibald. Uh it's indicated there in red, but let's get to um the background. So uh just about a year ago, back in twenty eighteen, uh The Merge was approved by the city council. So at that time, it was a hybrid industrial and retail center, um its subdivision, it had seventeen different lots. Now today, before you, you have a, a request to uh amend the map, um to make it from seventeen lots to fourteen lots. And then, in so doing, uh we're making sure that we get the right amount of right-of-way for Archibald and Limonite avenues. So let me, here is the uh tentative map that was originally approved with the seventeen parcels. And I uh have a copy of that at your, uh at the dais as well. Now I, um Jessica, do you have that red thing that you can, I wanna highlight. It's the industrial, just up just a little bit. Yeah, it's, it's that one, the one uh right in that area. That one has been merged from two to one, and then there's another one at the far um east, all the way over parcel six, I believe it's called. That one has been merged into one. And then most importantly, if you go down to where it says parcel number eleven. Just down right in that area, that is where the sprouts is going to be, so that configuration to that lot has been made in support of our sprouts. So now I'll take you to what we have now today. There's parcel one, you see it's been merged from two to one. There's parcel six, you see it's been merged from two to one, and then the parcel number, I can't read it now, I think the numbering has changed, but eight. Uh that is, again, like I said, in support of our sprout, so this is um necessary. Uh for this map to uh be modified and then recorded so that we can get the correct number of tenants. And so that sprouts, they can meet their, uh that, rather, the developer can meet the requirements that they have for their lease with sprouts. In terms of the number of, of tenants that they have to have on the site, et cetera, and being ready to have it open by a certain timeframe. So that's why we're here tonight. Oh, I didn't have to have you do that, sorry about that. So I did prepare where you could show, here's the star showing where the lots have been merged. There is the other star showing where the other porch is, and yet again, the third star showing where it is. I forgot I had done that, sorry about that, you go. All right, so uh let's go on to the recommended action. There are two. One, to pr- approve this amendment to the tentative map, and this would be done uh by the planning commission before the final map goes to the city council. And then that last thing is to make that general plan consistency um uh for Archibald and Limonite. We just wanna make sure we get that right, right-of-way. All right, so that concludes the presentation for this evening. I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you have. And uh that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions to staff?
Uh yes, I do. Uh to vacate the uh right-of-way, I, I still don't understand where that's gonna be at. Is that on Archibald or Limonite or both?
Both, but, excuse me.
Taking up some of the land to widen the street, is that what really?
The parcels themselves, um before, when the tentative parcel map was done, it, it just showed it. But in this case, we're actually showing that the dedication is gonna take place, and so uh we've worked it out with uh Grant Ross and his team. Uh Ray Orbis, uh so that we actually show it on the tentative map this time. That's the only difference. That such as parcel map doesn't have that right-of-way dedicated right now, so it would need to be uh dedicated in order to have the right language configuration. As shown in the general plan.
So all the lanes on those roads are gonna stay the same? They're not, we're not reducing any lanes?
No, 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 not reducing at all, sir, not at all.
Cause you're saying we're vacating?
Vacating the right-of-way to in favor of the city.
Okay.
From the developer.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I, I have a quick question on that too.
Absolutely.
It just made me think about it that, so we're not doing anything here that the dev- developer wasn't aware of before. We knew, we always know there was gonna be a dedicated easement for the road.
That's correct.
Now we're just putting that road in writing to show them exactly where it's gonna be, in other words.
Since we have the opportunity and had to come back before to amend the map, we decided to make sure we, we clarified it and made it crystal clear.
Uh it's cause I, I know we discussed this.
Yes.
I know he knew there was a dedicated easement, so this is just putting it in accurate writing so that there's no question about it now.
Absolutely, he and his team was here yesterday on another project and he's well aware of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll open up the public hearing. Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, we have two. Our first speaker is Ike Bootsma.
Okay.
Good evening. I think that's a, a simple item. I think we should just keep moving forward and. Uh let's get the shopping center built. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Keith White.
Um as you guys are aware, we have a new route four coming in starting in May. My question is, is that's gonna be shopping center, are we gonna have, make sure we have a bus stop there, Limonite, Archibald also? So I can shop over there too, cause I don't like going to other cities. I live in the city, I'm supposed to support my own city. So that's my concern, are we gonna have a bus stop being placed there as that shop's gonna get built? That's my very, that's the one thing I'm worried about. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, I, I think we had it before, I can, if I'm wrong, we do have a bus turnout, right?
You are correct, so uh the bus uh came to the, I don't know if they came to the city, to planning commission. But I do know they came to, okay, city council as well, and we went over the proposed route number four. And uh staff made those suggestions at that time, so now, of course, the ultimate decision is not, it's, it's with the transportation agency. But we were, made them well aware of the fact that it's the Sprouts facility and also the adjacent Walmart, where, where we really need transportation. So we made that crystal clear.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Oblea.
Yes, on the, uh at the bottom of parcel ten and eight, you can see there's, it says bus turnout right there. So there is the location for the bus turnout, under the new map. I got my glasses. So it's there.
All right, any more speaker cards?
No, we do not have any more.
I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion on the item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
And we can do it, we can do it in one, uh just based on staff recommendation here.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Oblea?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hovey?
Aye.
Chair Lee?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, that is the end of all the uh public hearing items. We will move on to the commission business. Um do we have any commission business?
There are business for all business. Okay, well, we have a couple of updates.
Okay, so staff.
All right.
Yeah, staff report.
Since we last met, I just wanted to uh let you know that uh the AAA facility has opened, so I'm sure, have you had an opportunity to see how wonderful that is? So always a coordinated effort um between the Lewis team and our economic development team uh to bring in that quality in building. In order to get it done in record time, so that's just a great thing. Um also, since we last met, the Little Eastern Cafe um has also opened up and I've dined there, very good uh food. Also had an opportunity to dine at Jono's as well, so let you know that. And then um one last thing, Mr. Sergio, you wanna pop up here to the podium? Mr. Sergio Heredia Melcourt is our very own brand spanking new planning intern. Of whom we are very proud. So um he is in school to finish finals, and so just tell him a little bit um what school you're at. And a little bit, just a quick thing, and then we'll be done.
Uh so I'm going to Capoli Pomona. Uh this is my last year, so I'm pretty excited to be here in Eastville too. Um I've learned a lot already, so I'm glad to continue being here.
So uh Sergio started off as a volunteer. Uh he was doing it for free, and then we had an opportunity where we could bring him on as a part-time intern. And so um he'll have the benefit of working with the planning team, so thank you to Sergio, but I wanted to have an opportunity to introduce him to you. So hopefully you'll see him maybe in about a year or so, he'll get to present his first project. We'll see how long it takes.
Welcome, congratulations.
All right, that's it first off.
All right.
Oh, and Merry Christmas in advance and Happy New Year.
All right, uh commission communications. Do we have any announcements from uh commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Chairman, um I wanna um thank the commission for giving me the opportunity to chair the commission the last year. Past year was been an honor and a privilege and a, and a joy. I really enjoyed it. And I uh look forward to good things from Commissioner Lee, so good luck. It's yours now. Thank you, and I wanna wish everybody a happy, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and a prosperous new year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have anything? Wow.
It's been a good year.
Nice, all right. So I just wanna wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year as well. Um and we look forward to uh meeting again next year. Um so the next uh meeting uh for planning commission will be on January fifteenth, twenty twenty at six PM. So uh with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.